Highway was presented as being a four-lane roadway, but that's only east of Truman Road. West of Truman Road, it is a two-lane roadway for a distance of two and a quarter miles. This portion is where my and other residents' driveways are. Ask anyone living there how busy and dangerous it is now, let alone what it would be like in the future if this development is allowed to go forward. The proposed area for this development is in a floodplain. It is described as having a low-lying nature for a significant portion of the area, and that innovative earthwork and hydrology practices will be needed to effectively deal with these challenges. Everyone knows this who lives or has lived in the vicinity because it regularly floods. After any substantial rain, Necessary Road is always covered with water. The overarching question should be, why add more concrete surfaces to an existing floodplain than have to expend efforts to mitigate the problem which was aggravated by the additional concrete? It just doesn't make sense. The Little Blue Trace Trail is truly a gem for the area. I've used the trail several times where it winds between fields and the Little Blue River. It's a calming experience apart from traffic and other distractions that surround our everyday world. If this development is allowed to move forward-
One more minute-
Portions of this trail will no longer be a welcome escape, and it will nearly be reduced to an alleyway next to buildings even after the changes that North Point has already made. Because of these considerations I have listed, I request the planning commission to deny the multiple rezoning requests of North Point Development for the East Gate Commerce Center. One of the comprehensive plan-guiding principles for this commission is to, quote, "provide sufficient opportunities for industrial development sites within the community and promote diversification of the city's commercial-industrial base," unquote. If you vote to pro-theresy zonings, in my opinion, you might as well amend it to say, "to the detriment of the citizens of Independence, Missouri." Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Kenneth Love.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commission members. Thank y'all for being awake and being here this long. I didn't know which-
State your name and address.
My name is Kenneth Love.
Thank you.
I live at 16808 East George Franklin Drive, Independence, 64055. I really didn't know which list to sign tonight. So, what I have to say might jump a little back and forth, and I hope it's allowed.
Fine.
So first off, I'm gonna start off asking our chairman, if you're a member of the Community Christ Church-
I am.
With you are a member, I ask that you resign yourself from voting tonight. Due to the fact, most of this property is owned by the Community Christ Church. That is the reason I'm asking.
As I understand it, it's not a conflict, but I will yield to the counselor to-
You're a member also.
What did you ask her to do?
We can address this at the end of Mr. Love's comments.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyway, moving forward, like I said, this project has nothing good for me or nothing bad for me. I see it as some goodness for the City of Independence, and I see it for some badness of the City of Independence. I personally stand with the residents of Independence. If the residents speak up and tell y'all they don't want this, that's where I'm gonna stand, is with the resident. This is nothing political, but that's where I stand. He talked about hourly jobs and what type of jobs it might bring. The word "might," we don't know what "might" means. Every place we look around the City of Independence, they're hiring. They are hiring, they cannot fill these jobs. Jobs at fifteen dollars an hour right now cannot pay a rental place that's gonna be built for fourteen hundred dollars a month, unless you've got three people living there. How do I know that? It's because I am an investor here in the City of Independence. I own forty-seven units, and I know what rent and work jobs pay, and what you can afford just by telling me your salary. And for someone to say, "Fourteen hundred dollars," let me tell ya, that's gonna be hard to fill those apartments, very hard. Before I walk away tonight, this has already been said, but I stand with the brothers and sisters of the union trades, of the Teamsters Union, bricklayers, or whatever union they're in, and I believe in prevailing wage. We have a situation in the City of Independence, and shaking your head is not right, sir. But anyway-
I think all he's just, we have to stay on the rezoning issue.
I am staying on it.
Okay.
Due to the fact, a government job came to the City of Independence that was supposed to be prevailing wage, and it still ain't being paid today. If you're union, you're union; if you're not, you're not. But I'm a union, and everybody in here, who rock.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Is it Damon?
I was voted.
Miles, you did, didn't you?
I voted for the project.
Okay. Is there anyone who did not sign up that wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, are you sworn in? Are you sworn in?
Yeah.
Come on up.
I think I got here too early to sign up for this.
No worries. State your name and address.
My name's Bob Brackenbury. I live at 3111 South Arrowhead Drive, Independence, Missouri 64057. I've got a few concerns about, you know, the warehouse part of the project on the north end looks like a pretty good deal. You know, it's, there's not a lot of jobs, warehouse jobs, and a lot of them, if you've watched anything lately, are getting automated, totally automated. And since there'll be new warehouses, who knows? Of course, at seventy years old, fifteen years from now, I won't care one way or the other. But I'm kinda thinking about the legacy we're leaving, our kids twenty years down the road. And I'm thinking, on the south end, the retail, there's jobs, restaurant jobs off of Thirty-Ninth Street that aren't being filled.
Do you want to pull the mic up a little closer? Thank you.
Okay. There's restaurant jobs on Thirty-Ninth Street by Independence Center around there that aren't being filled. There's a place that was finished, a new place that was finished off of Jackson and Thirty-Ninth Street a year ago, and it just got sold, I think, because they just finished it up. You know, the building's been finished sitting there. I don't think we need any more retail, and especially, I don't know what we're gonna do with Independence Center if you throw more competition at it. Is there any plan for that? That's just a question I have. What are we gonna do? I mean, it's half-empty, and we're gonna put in new retail? That just doesn't make any sense to me. And that's all I got to say. Like I say, the north part, yeah, cool. The retail on the south end, I don't know.
I appreciate you, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
I did it though, not in my office.
You did?
Do it now.
Yeah.
Seriously, twice?
Oh, no, 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 if you had already been sworn in-
In my school, in my office, at work, when you guys did it on the internet.
Oh.
But you want me to do it live? Gonna do it live?
No.
No Bible, no Bible.
Okay.
What? Do I have to take your hat off?
What's that?
Do I have to take your hat off?
No, you can wear the hat. It's very handsome. Okay. Raise your right hand.
It is.
Do you promise to tell the whole truth in front of this commission?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
People don't, I don't cupcake.
All right, you are officially sworn in, and if you'll just state your name and address, that would be fantastic.
My name's Keith Foliani. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of Heart of America Pop Warner, 21, 2801 South Necessary Road. And the only concerns we have would be that road. And it's just real simple. We use it from August till November, and we use it from March to June. It is a volunteer basis. We need access to that road and our property at all times. It's all volunteer mowing and taking care of it. We've discussed it, I think, at the last meeting, or the last, or over Casell and stuff, so... But the concern is, is Necessary Road is a little windy, and it's a straight drop-off, right? You got about a six-to-eight-foot drop-off on the left, and then you got our ditch, which is, it's just horrible. So the concern is, is they're putting about three more entrances in on that road, and it's a two-lane, and it's straight... What's that mean?
Oh, you have, you've spoken for one minute. You get five.
Oh.
You're only at one, so keep going.
All right, cool. I mean, that'll work. So, the concern is, is the traffic.
Okay.
Saturdays, we'll end up with fifteen to three thousand cars. Every hour and a half to two hours, there's four hundred, five hundred cars pulling in and out, getting their little kids there. Remember, we're all, we're all about the youth. I don't care about big business, I don't care about your politics, nothing else. I care about the kids of Independence, making sure we got a good place for them to play. We've been here for over fifty years. Don Ramel started this league. So, I just wanna make sure that road is always gonna be act, I mean, I don't know how they're gonna do, I would assume if you're gonna do work on that road, it's gotta have to be between Thanksgiving to March, and that's it. So if there's a tear-out or anything like that, I'm giving you your time. So that's what you're telling me.
Thank you. It is a question we will ask.
I can give my time to somebody else. I've seen that before. Can you do that?
Sure.
So whoever wants to waste my time, take it.
I think that's a different venue, but, thank you.
All right, I just wanna make sure that's done.
I appreciate it, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition of this case? Come on up.
I'd like to say, I'm just saying, how's it work, sorry.
Okay, this wonderful woman first, and then you may go after her.
I want you sworn in first.
Okay. Are you sworn in, sir?
No.
Come on up. We'll swear you both in at the same time.
Sorry.
No, and I won't make you laugh, 'cause that's miserable. Okay, raise your right hand, please. Do you promise to tell the truth before this commission? If so, say yes.
Hi, my name's Teresa Tweedy. I live at 3111 South Arrowhead Drive, Independence, Missouri 64057. I'm a retired nurse-
Thank you.
-for thirty-seven years. I just don't under, I'm not a zoning person that knows all that, but I don't understand how we could consider rezoning anything at this point when traffic seems to be such a big issue, and I've heard two or three times from the other side, "Yeah, that's something we gotta look into." "Yeah, that's something we should check out." And being concerned, I mean, I'm happy that the CEO of HCA, I'm happy that they're in favor of it, but maybe the other thousands of people that work there wouldn't be. My concern is the traffic coming off of I-70, coming down there, is gonna be right in front of the hospital. What if you have a sick child or an ambulance that needs to get through from a heart attack? And you've got all this traffic backed up. Well, that seems to be something they wanna look into. I think they should look into it and have an answer for us before we talk about rezoning anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And state your name and address, please.
My name's Jesus Schuler. I live at 3017 Bryn Mawr, RD-Mize in Bryn Mawr. And we have enough trouble over there as it is. I don't, I don't want this, and I don't think it's good for this city either. We can't fill the residential or industrial stuff we have now. What's gonna happen when we build more? You say it's gonna create jobs, how do you know it's gonna create jobs for independent citizens? You can't even staff the bars, restaurants, and companies that we already have in Independence. The traffic over there is a nightmare. They use RD-Mize as a drag strip. We don't have enough cops to patrol this. We don't have enough cops to deal with the crime it's gonna bring, the people that they're gonna bring, that it's gonna bring in that we don't want over there. It's gonna ruin the beautiful side of Independence that's the only thing left in the city that isn't trashed or torn up, is that side of town. And you put these industrial companies in there, and that's what's gonna happen. So I just, I don't see, I don't see it. It doesn't make any sense. And I hope you guys will vote down. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am?
No, I'm not swaying.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth in front of this commission?
I do.
Thank you. State your name and address, please.
My name is Mary Hoff, and I live at 400 North Bly Road. And I've lived there, Howard and I have lived there for twenty-six, twenty-six years now. I grew up, went to Fort Osage, graduated from the fort, and, and I wish I could show you the pictures from my driveway of the cornfield and the soybean fields that we look at now. You know, when you, when you come up from, off of Seventy-Eight Highway and you're heading north on Bly, I am the second house right there, two-story brick home. And the view we have right now is just amazing, and we do see eagles. And there is an eagle's nest across Seventy-Eight Highway there from, from where we live. We've seen them. And we just, we weren't even aware of any of the meetings that they had, so, I don't know, by the time we saw the sign, the meetings were done. So we don't even know what all the plans were gonna, gonna be. So we don't know if they're gonna try to run city sewers then, up our street, 'cause we're all on septic. So does that mean that's gonna cost us money? And how is that gonna affect our property value there? You know, our homes? Because all of us have acreage. My next-door neighbor that just moved in, in the end of October, paid four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for his home on ten acres. And he is right there, he's the first house past the bridge. So how does that affect our homes there? You know, our value, you know, that's part of my retirement plan, our home, to eventually have it all fixed and sell it for Howard and I to retire with, you know? And I'm sure a lot of the other neighbors up the street feel the same way. There's a lot of old-timers there that have lived there longer than I have. But I like to see development, but not that close to our homes. If, if they could stay on the south side of Seventy-Eight, that would be so much better. Because like I said, right there, we were always told there was gonna be a park across the street when we went to the meetings back in '07. You know, and I thought that'd be great, you know, to have parkland over there. And we love the farmland. I don't mind the farmers coming in now. We love that. But to have huge buildings, as my view from my home, we'll have to move, we'll have to try to sell, and then am I gonna get the money out of my home that, that is worth? You know, we don't think we will. And it's not just me, and I, and I don't know why my other neighbors aren't here, they should be, a lot of them still work. But, yeah, that's our biggest fear, is, is to lose the value on our property, and like I said, that'll be my view out of my, my living room window, is looking right at those buildings. And I know none of you would want that, you know? When you've been used to looking at corn and soybean, you know, for twenty-six years, like we have. You know, we grew up there. I, I've lived in Independence my whole life, sixty-three years, and in this area, you know? And, but if that would happen, Howard and, we would, we'd have to leave Jackson County, we'd have to move out, because we're, we still feel like we're kinda in the country, right, where we're at? But we're in the city, you know? But it, we won't have that country kinda feeling anymore with these big buildings going in right down the street from us. And like I said, if we have to, everybody on our street has to hook into sewers, I don't know what kinda money that is. You know, we're not wealthy families by all means on that street to where some people may have to move, 'cause I couldn't even afford to hook into the sewer. So, you know, that's, that's just our opinion, you know? And I'm speaking for a lot of my neighbors. There's, there's not many houses on our street. What is there, honey? Maybe ten?
Maybe eighteen.
Yeah, I don't know, but, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Take out my glasses so I make sure I don't miss anybody. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to declare the, no, 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 what?
Give the applicant a chance to-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The applicant, would you please come up and respond?
Yeah, so, in, in response to, you know, the speculative nature of the buildings, I think, you know, I tried to cover that well in the presentation, that, you know, the twenty million square feet that we built in the Kansas City area, probably seventeen to eighteen million square feet of that is, was speculative when we built it. And it's, you know, it's the reality of the economy that we're in, that you build a speculative building to get a tenant in and to be successful. So I think one of the big issues here that, you know, maybe is, you know, I perceive it to, you know, that I know the, the plan really well, so I, I know this, but for people seeing it, you know, for the first time, or, or, you know, maybe for the second or third time after some of our community meetings, and that is, you know, this is not ten million square feet of industrial buildings that are, that's going up overnight. So, you know, we'll start with one to two buildings as a Phase One, and we'll start one of those buildings south, we'll start one of those buildings south at the Business Park Plan, you know, just north of Necessary Road intersection. So, you know, one of those buildings would suit a different type of tenant than the larger-format building that you see, you know, on the, as we get up closer to Truman Road. And so that second building that we would start, you know, kinda two at the same time, would be that larger building, you know, circled in red there on the, on the left side, just south of Truman Road, kinda sandwiched between Little Blue Parkway and, and Seventy-Eight Highway. So the idea-
You have one minute left. I'm sorry, sorry.
Oh, so the idea here is really that, you know, once a building gets leased eighty percent, we would start the next building. So, and we really approach this to say, let's start up against all of the existing I-1 zoning and move east, so stay away from the trail as long as possible. We believe we're gonna be fully successful over the next decade to build this park out, but if we're not, you, you don't have buildings up against the trail as a Phase One. You have buildings that are generally adjacent to Barbara Concrete and, and Independence Power and Light as a Phase One. And so, you know, the approach here is to build one or two buildings every year as, on demand, for the next, you know, twelve, thirteen years. So it is a phased project in that regard, which also allows us to control, you know, and review continually the traffic issue. And in response to, you know, the traffic that comes off of I-70, this is exactly why we did an extensive traffic study, to, to identify those issues, and to say that we're putting that off and not looking at it yet? We certainly haven't put it off. We paid for an extensive traffic study to review those issues, and we're stepping up to say, if that's a three or four million dollar improvement, we're gonna help with that. And so we're continuing to work with MODOT and figure out how we can leverage our money to, to come up with a solution here quickly on, on that existing traffic issue. And, you know, in terms of, you know, houses that are built overlooking the valley, I would say that if the Harmony Plan was built with all of the mixed use, you would lose your view of the cornfields and, and that as well. But, you know, I, I, in, in terms of, you know, home values, I would, I would say, look at, you know, our park at Horizons, that, that park has been fully developed, and then a real estate developer came in for a single-family and built houses overlooking our park, right adjacent to the highway. They look down, generally have the same views, and those houses sell for seven to eight hundred thousand dollars today. So, you know, we don't perceive that to be an issue, which is exactly why we use environmental policy documents to stay twelve hundred, thirteen hundred feet away from existing houses, so that we aren't, you know, impactful to, in that regard. I think I've covered that. The other comment was regarding portions of the trail that are unusable due to the location of the buildings. So again, we, you know, the portions of the plan that we've tried to stay, you know, four hundred and fifty to five hundred feet away from the trail, when buildings couldn't, you know, in those areas adjacent to Seventy-Eight Highway, we got rid of the buildings. So we've lost square footage, still purchasing the ground and have the cost into it, but we've lost that square footage and that coverage in order to make the trail more usable and to dedicate more open space, you know, that two hundred and fifty-plus acres that we talked about.
Area E, obviously north of Seventy-Eight, east of Little Blue. I'm, I'm looking at Area E as it exists presently, and as it would exist in the proposed plan, I think, Phase Two. Talk about that. The aesthetics, it appear to be quite a bit of lakes in that area.
Yeah.
And yet, we do have, coming out of the northern part of that development is Bly Road. Talk about that for me.
Yeah, so, you know, this really goes back to the environmental policy that I spoke about, you know, the twelve hundred to thirteen hundred feet away that we wanna be. We do that for a number of different reasons, one of which is air quality, the other is for sound mitigation, so that we know that, is a sound generated by a site like that, you know, by the time you go five hundred feet, that that sound level has dropped down to, you know, essentially a residential standard. So by doubling that distance, again, a thousand or twelve hundred feet, it really, really minimizes the amount of sound that comes from these buildings. And, you know, and so there's a lot of that pre-planning that goes into it, and so when we look at a site like that area that you're referencing adjacent to Bly Road, we say, you know, there's floodplain in some of those areas. So you talk about creative soil management, well, you know, the, the creative part of the soil management is really to overexcavate in some of these areas and create lakes and create larger, you know, bodies of water like that, where you can use the soil and build up the building pad itself. And so there's a period of time where that building will need to settle, and there's other structural things that you can do for a building like this. But our goal has been to take all of that volume that we wanna mitigate, so essentially for every cubic foot of dirt that you, you know, put into the floodplain, you take a cubic foot of dirt out. So you have equivalent volumes in that same area. So, you know, that's a practice that we work with FEMA regularly on. And so what we did is, we took all of those flood compensation areas, and we pushed them to the north, adjacent to where that limited, where that residential was, that, you know, that's twelve hundred and thirteen hundred feet away from us. So, you know, those are just good planning principles, as opposed to pushing the buildings further north and doing flood compensation somewhere else. We kinda look at, you know, how can we achieve, you know, all the results that we need to achieve, but then still apply those good planning principles.
I'm confident that you'll be able to answer this, because you talked about Spring Branch, which is a very small creek. So tell me about the water quality in these lakes in and about the warehousing, what utilities and accommodations to residents that these bodies of water will offer, if any?
Yeah, so, you know, the accommodation that those water bodies offer, so when we approach stormwater, and we had this conversation with Jackson County Parks and Rec as well, so they're very interested in how stormwater is managed adjacent to their trail. So we apply what's commonly referred to as kind of a treatment train. So the stormwater that runs off of our building and off of our truck cord goes into like a bio-swell and filters and some other things that you can apply adjacent to the truck cord. That's really largely for water quality aspects, so to filter, filter out some of the pollutants that might be on any parking lot, shopping center, you know, industrial building, whatever the case may be. And so that stormwater comes off of that area, runs through those filters, and then eventually makes its way into these larger pond areas. And so that allows additional sediments to fall out, you know, other kinda wetland plant material work to clean up the water as well. And so the larger water bodies actually serve a couple of purposes. One, they clean up the stormwater, as we were talking about, and two, they control the volume of stormwater. And so part of the storm drainage study- And so part of the storm drainage study that has been submitted is really to focus on water quality, that's a big component of this plan overall, and then accommodate the flood volume, you know, kind of cubic foot for cubic foot, to make sure that we haven't lost any flood volume for downstream properties. So the nice thing is that this particular project is very close to the Missouri River, so, you know, it's, it's close in that regard, in the sense that you don't have a lot of adjacent properties. Most of the property that the creek goes through, or the Blue River goes through, is all owned by Jackson County Parks and Rec. So this is why we continue to dialogue with them about the project and the stormwater concepts. And, you know, so in the end, it's an extensive stormwater plan that will need to be developed on a building-by-building basis, and, but we know generally that these are the components by which that plan will, will be achieved, and so we incorporate them into the planning effort upfront.
Tell me about the water quality.
Yeah.
Impediments to public access and public usage.
So, you know, in, in terms of impediments to public access and public usage, you know, I, I would say that what we've offered here is lakes and wetland areas and things adjacent to the Little Blue Trail that offer additional public access and public usage. So, you know, our goal is adjacent to the dog park, and that area adjacent to Little Blue Trace Trail, is to actually create a lake there, you know, with plant materials around it and make it, you know, real natural, that, you know, people can use and walk around. That would be, again, part of, hopefully, part of Jackson County Park and Rec's, you know, trail system. But that, ultimately, that's a passive recreation use that we would create with this project.
We had one speaker who was speaking on behalf of this project talk about somewhere in Texas, his open fields that were lost. We have a lady who is speaking in opposition, who talks about the loss of a soybean field or a cornfield. Tell me your thoughts visually.
Yeah.
Tell me the story of what we lose and what we gain.
Sure. Well, just, you know, in terms of stormwater and water quality, I would tell you that generally farm fields are, have a lot of pesticide usage and things on them, and there's no water quality basins that capture that runoff from a site today, before it goes into the Little Blue. That's a, a big difference between what exists today versus what, you know, would exist with a development like this. There's a, there's a thought-out stormwater approach to a planned project like this that doesn't exist today. In addition, I would tell you that Jackson County Parks and Rec, when we had our initial meeting with them, the, one of their biggest concerns is the nutrients that come off of the farm field today, it's uncontrollable, the erosion and sedimentation that goes into the Little Blue. And, you know, and they were, you know, supportive of our approach. We walked through that stormwater approach with them. So again, you know, more to dialogue with them about later this week and, and ongoing. But, you know, they, they have a vested interest in how stormwater is managed adjacent to their trail and that corridor. And, you know, we, we have started that conversation, it's gone really well so far in terms of how we would approach it, and they've been, I believe, on the same page with us.
Final one. Wildlife, ducks, geese, will they survive in that water?
Yeah, they, they will. So, you know, someone brought up the American bald eagle, and, you know, and I would just say, if you drive, I've seen it, I go to our park at 210 Highway and 291, there's many lakes there as well, you know, kind of for a different purpose, volume control there as well, but many geese, you know, migratory birds, eagles, we see lots of bald eagles in that whole area. So, you know, the use of or having buildings in that valley doesn't deter those migratory birds and, and birds of prey from using it. In fact, I would argue that if we see it there, and, you know, and that's adjacent to an intermodal facility, you know, providing this 1,000-acre corridor, you know, and adding to that 1,000-acre corridor by, you know, the ponds and wetlands and things that we'll create with this project, only further the, the fact that we'll see migratory birds and other wildlife using it. I mean, you know, just the north end of our project alone is probably 200, probably 150 to 200 acres of ponds and wetlands that we'll create adjacent to, adjacent to the existing rail corridor that goes on the north side right now, so.
I like one final question. And sorry about that. There are times when the impossible happens, and use, residential use, is simply, in spite of very best efforts, in the bigger picture, there is no coexistence, simply for whatever reason. What would you do? We got, let's say we got hypothetically, this is a hypothetical question, of course, we got eight to 10 houses that, for whatever reason, simply cannot work there in that Bly Road segment. What do we do? The city councilman is getting phone calls. They don't like that. Mayor's getting phone calls. Planning Commission staff's getting phone calls.
Yeah.
It's a mess. It's just whatever reason the coexistence is not working. How do we fix it?
Well, you know, I would say, one, we're, we're positing that the coexistence can't work. You know, we, we feel very strongly that we have a lot of neighborhoods that are a whole lot closer than 1,200, 1,300 feet away, where that coexistence works just fine. And, you know, when it, I certainly am going to introduce myself tonight to make sure that, you know, we can have an ongoing dialogue about that and what we can do to work with them. I mean, that's part of really being a community stakeholder and a good neighbor here. And so, you know, that's not the issue. Like, we'll continue to work with our adjacent neighbors, we do that in many communities all over, to, you know, find out what the, what the specific issue is that we need to try to solve and come up with a, a solution. So, you know, I think we would just ask to give it time to, to see that, you know, the fact that we've dedicated so much open space between us and them, the addition of, you know, a trail system that we're putting in along the rail corridor, all of those types of things that just kind of go to, you know, keep that whole area a little bit more natural, I, I think is a, is an opportunity for us to coexist there and use that buffer between us and the, the single-family residential. But we, you know, we certainly, our commitment as a neighbor is to continue to have conversations about that. And, you know, and we've, we actually got, you know, criticized for the large signs that we put up advertising the neighborhood meetings, because they were too large. But, you know, I think that, you know, our goal was to try to broadcast it to as many people as we possibly could to get them to one of the three community meetings, and we'll sit down specifically and dialogue with the people on Bly Road.
And I believe you'll do the right thing. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone else who has questions or concerns?
Madam Chair, I got some questions here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, notes I wrote down. Any type of tax abatement going on that we're going to need to know about, or is that something we need to worry about? I mean...
That would be irrelevant for tonight's meeting. It would be addressed at other meetings.
Say then it's on, be back to the city planning guys here. I know 78 Highway is not our road, but is there any plans of widening it to four lanes all the way that we know of?
Not for widening per se, but we do have as part of their corridor plan, when you start looking at Phase Four, there are some potential impacts to turning lane movements. And as you go into Phase Three and Four, we see that along Missouri 78 and up to Seven Highway. And then, but again, this is, these are phased projects, we have to be focused as to what phase we're looking at immediately versus the final build-out, which could be 10, 15 years from now. Part of that also, when our traffic crew looked at, looked at their plan, part of in Phase Three, for example, 78 Highway and, or, and Seven Highway, looking at some left and right turn lane movements, improvements for there, and obviously 78 is a state highway, so MODOT would have to be involved in approval of those as well. But as we see Phase Four happening, and we look at the area, what I'm going to call the south portion, or the portion down by Artemis and Necessary Road, and then the portion of the middle portion near Truman Road and 78 Highway, when that BP finally gets built out, let's say in a Phase Four, there would have to be some turning lane movements, improvements and signal improvements at 78 and Truman Road.
Okay, so that's basically going to be left up to MODOT, that we'll have to push them to do that, correct?
Anything on 78 would eventually be approved by MODOT, yes.
Okay. Then let's go to Necessary Road, like what the gentleman brought up about where they're going to have a bunch of cars. That's, that's in the first phase, would that we'd be able to work around their timeframe with all the cars?
Yeah, so specifically why we picked the building we do is, we would do that, that building on the north side away from the Pop Warner fields. And, you know, and that allows Pop Warner to continue to get their access off of Artemis Road, but, you know, we'll sit with them and specifically work through a plan. I think what our goal would be is to, you know, obviously we would maintain access to them, no problem, but if we can build the intersection at Necessary and Little Blue Parkway and extend that road in, and give them a place where they have two points of access, then when the time comes where we have to do some improvement in Necessary Road, when we develop on that portion of the site, then at that point, we can talk about how do we divert some of their traffic to be able to get back to the signal that we would install with our first, or the intersection that we have with our first building, and then work on road improvements with them.
As long as you, you guys will work with them, that sounds great to me.
Yeah.
My next question's going to be probably back to the city again. What kind of price, tax price is this going to cost our taxes for electric and sewer upgrades out there, since there's probably not enough power out there to do all this?
So when we had discussions with all the utility departments, and that included IPL as well as water and sewer, there would definitely have to be some transmission line improvements. And I believe the CIP, they kind of point out about potentially $4 million worth of improvements. Now understand, those build-outs would be placed on the development as those projects progress, and, as well as water and sewer. So there is capacity. A substation, from what I understand from IPL, would have to be built out in that general area. And then there is some transmission lines that are currently out there, and the applicant's aware of, of those locations as well. Does that answer your question on that?
Tax dollars that we'll have to spend, or is that part of his? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I would just say, I know that wasn't a question directly from, for me, but, you know, this is part and parcel of why we start where we start, and we phase the development in. And so, you know, we start here at 78 and Truman Road, in that area, south of Truman Road on the west side, because that's where the utility infrastructure is today.
Right.
So as we develop and we move east, we pull that infrastructure with us. So that's really what he's talking about.
Okay, so you guys are basically, okay, that's why I was wanting that answer, because I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so we extend water mains, we extend sewers, we extend the power.
Because I saw something that we're going to have to pay for, $8 million of stuff out there, and I was trying to figure out, is that taxes, or is that, well, it's got to be taxes if it's part of $8 million on our part for substations and stuff.
Or you, you might be referring to the Kepel Improvement Project.
Yeah, Kepel Improvement Project.
Yeah, that was like, I think it was 4.5 or 4.6 million. But understand that those improvements would end up, the, the cost would be bared by the development as it continues out in that direction.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that, then. I think that's it for right now. Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'll just get a little bit more granular here. In Commissioner's comments, and as relates to Pop Warner specifically, and I think this relates to sort of the, the larger area in general, you talked about 14,000 trips a day generated by a park, I believe that's the right figure?
I think overall, including the retail, I think it was 36 or 37,000.
Okay, 37. So how much, knowing the tenants that you have in most of your parks, how does that split between Monday through Friday, and Saturday and Sunday, when something like Pop Warner might be going on?
Yeah, obviously, the retail portion of those trips, you know, will fall in line with, you know, weekend travel, but the bulk of those trips that we look at on the industrial, so, again, we, we survey all of our tenants, we did that 12 to 14 million square foot portfolio analysis from a traffic perspective. So we know that, you know, maybe 15% to 20% of our tenants will actually work on the weekends, most do not. So if you come to our park during the week, during the weekend, it's, it's essentially vacant, there's no traffic down there, we have one or two tenants that, that do work. And so the, the peak hours for a generator, you know, building use, versus the peak hours for, you know, people coming home from work or going to work in the mornings, those are offset specifically, and we know that by doing our analysis, but we know it just by talking to tenants. Tenants specifically want that offset, so they want their staff to be able to come in and out without being in rush hour traffic. And then they also stage their deliveries and truck traffic kind of even before that, so that they have an opportunity, so that those trucks aren't coming in during shift change. So we know that, you know, a typical peak hour on a roadway like at I-70 and, and Jackson in the PMP is probably 4:45 to 5:45 is a typical peak hour. The peak hour for our generators is usually 2:30 to 3:30, so it's offset significantly from that. So the effects of our traffic on, on that rush hour is, you know, usually pretty minimal. And this is why people will say like, well, I, I leave work every day at, you know, 5:30, 6 o'clock, I, I see no major traffic getting in and out, no trucks or anything like that. And, you know, and we don't have a traffic signal at our main entrance. We, it's, it's essentially stop control, the Parkway goes all the way through, and, you know, we have yet to meet warrants with, you know, the, the park built out on both sides, which is effectively about 10 million square feet, we have yet to meet the traffic signal warrants. So, you know, that's a positive in that regard, because that means that peak hour, people coming to work or going, you know, in the morning, or going home at night, are completely missing the peak traffic from our use. So those are staggered by several hours, pretty typically.
Thank you for clarifying.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Question for city. When was the last time that you guys have been aware of a company that would be willing to invest $1 billion in Independence?
I haven't had that experience.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Dr. Snodgrass to come back to the podium.
Can we do that?
You're in your question and answer portion, so certainly, the commission can bring someone back.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Doctor. Several commenters have mentioned labor, labor shortage, what labor pool is going to be available. I know you and Dr. Earl talk regularly, and you have some idea about what comes from Independent School District and what will come forth from Fort Osage. Talk about the availability of a workforce and what the stream is in your mind in meeting the needs, the existing and future. Thank you, Doctor.
Absolutely. We have a, a initiative at Fort Osage School District called Real World Learning Opportunities. So what we're trying to do is make sure every student who walks across that stage at Community Christ Auditorium walks out and has an opportunity to succeed. So we have different opportunities for students, whether it's college-bound students who take dual-credit courses in high school that preps them for college, or AP courses, or whether it's our Career and Technology Center where we offer 18 programs, or, and we continue to add programming, this year we added HVAC, we added welding a few years ago, and so we're making sure that we're providing opportunities for students to join the workforce. I think the biggest piece of the puzzle is just making sure that, what, what I've seen in the conversations I've had is there are a lot of folks who are driving right past that site as we speak, and traveling beyond the, the... and traveling beyond the city limits of Independence, going to other locations. So, we're not only talking about students, we're also talking about parents, and folks who live in our school district. And so, I don't know if I answered your question, but ultimately, the way I see it, beyond the tax revenue that we look to receive as a school district, more importantly, I believe we're providing additional opportunities for jobs for students as well, as they enter the, as they graduate. The other thing I mentioned originally also is, we have, we want to provide opportunities for students to partner with industry. And so, with that, we have an internship opportunity for students to partner with the companies that might come in, those tenants, and provide those spaces for them to partner and create opportunities for those kids.
Can you also, sorry if I interrupted, can you also repeat again what the benefit to the school district is? And it's Independence, Fort Osage, and does Blue Springs benefit?
It is. Blue Springs, Independence, and Fort Osage School District.
Okay, can you, do you know the, I know you know your numbers.
I don't know, I know that Fort Osage School District has approximately half the square footage.
Okay.
I believe Independence is the next, square footage-wise, and Blue Springs looks to have the least amount of square footage. But I do not know their complete tax exactly like I do ours.
And what was yours, again?
Thirty-two million dollars.
Okay.
We currently receive three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars on that, on the property in Fort Osage School District. And so, if you do the math out, over that time, you're looking over a hundred, just over a hundred thousand dollars, over thirty-three years, a hundred and seven thousand. You're all, so you're looking at over thirty-two million dollars over thirty-three years.
Madam Chair, if I could, just, I have a question myself on the relevance of this to the rezoning. My question would be, is, are we talking about the idea here that with the rezoning, we are looking to provide a source for community members to work? I guess I'm missing what the relevance of the questions on the education to the rezoning is.
If we do not have a sufficiency in labor force, this whole project is going to collapse, because there's not enough workers. Not the level of education, and that's not my real question. My real question, bottom line is, will there be a, in your estimate, will there be a sufficiency in labor force to meet the need?
Yeah, we, you know, we have approximately three hundred and eighty students graduate every year. And so, we find that most students stay in this area. They live in this area, they grow up in this area. It is not uncommon for most of the folks who have students in our school district, graduated from Fort Osage School District or local districts. And so, they look to stay in this area. And so, through this opportunity, I believe that this would create just a better opportunity for those folks to have a work opportunity.
In other words, the labor that is coming forth each year, and those who would work closer to home, we should not have a problem in terms of meeting the demand?
That's a, you know, that's a challenging question.
Yeah.
I wish I had a crystal ball. But I-
You are a doctor, aren't you?
We only have to rezone this, though.
I would not think so, but I don't have a crystal ball on that.
Thank you, Doctor.
You bet.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any other questions from Commissioners of City? Or the North Point? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, at this point, you should close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Okay. Any more discussion?
Sorry about that.
Just a reminder, we have three motions and three votes, starting within the industrial?
If I could, Madam Chairman, so, one of the speakers did raise an issue that needs to be addressed before there's deliberation or vote on this issue.
Okay.
That speaker indicated that there were, at least, I think we understood that there were two members of the Community of Christ Church that are on the commission. Is that correct? Is there anyone else? Okay, I'm going to start with Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Ferguson, you are a member of the Community of Christ Church. Do you have any other roles with the church? Is there any reason that you personally would benefit if the church were to sell property? Do you get any money, or get any specific benefit to yourself in any way? Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I'm going to ask you the same questions. Are you a member of Community of Christ Church?
Yes.
Do you have any other roles at the church?
I'm a pastor.
You're a pastor. Are you paid for that role?
No.
You're not paid. Would you have any reason that if the church were to sell any property in relation to this, that you would get, or your family would get, any sort of, you know, specific monetary benefit to you?
No.
Okay, thank you. Based on the information provided, there's no conflict of interest with respect to these commissioners deliberating and voting on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any discussion between us? Any thoughts? Yes, sir?
I see. It looks like the long-range plan was always to do industrial down here. I do see where we tried to put some residential back into the area, but it never did happen. So, I mean, they seem to be asking, answering all the questions we give them. If they follow through with it, is the next thing, but we can't decide that, and we don't know that, because that is in the future. We just have to go by his word, that he will follow up with what we've asked him, and what people have asked him. And they seem to have the correct answers for a lot of this stuff, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think our esteemed Commissioner, Mr. Preston, kind of put our commission, our commission's purpose to the forefront, because there were points that were brought up by, you know, pros and people for it and people against it. But, you know, just, they are a local company. I obviously would love to see local workers, but like, those things aren't up to us. And I would say that tonight was amazing, and it was fun. But you know what is going to be more fun, is the city council meeting, when they actually have to decide these things. And so, it was, tonight was kind of practice for everyone, because that's when things really get determined. But I think with a company like this, having two hundred million square feet in the Kansas City area, I doubt that Independence is going to be, is going to be the one that doesn't work out for them. But, as far as, so, as far as rezoning and the things that we get to determine, I'm glad we get to do it. And I hope that all made sense. I'm two and a half hours past my bedtime, and I haven't had dinner. So, I'm having Taco Bell, if anybody wants to go with me.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think Dr. Snodgrass said it perfectly. We don't have a crystal ball. But I was on this commission when we previously entertained a potential business park or industrial park. What I've seen tonight has been an incredible preparation, an incredible commitment to interfacing with the residents, albeit not everyone saw the oversized sign. I think what we've got here is an opportunity of a lifetime. I have to say that, otherwise, I would feel I failed to do what I should have done. There is a partnership here. That is in evidence. It is a partnership of city management and this incredible planning commission staff. I honestly believe if one is willing to commit one billion dollars, there is probably going to be some follow-through. I believe that. I honestly and sincerely believe that. I just want to applaud the incredible work to get this project to this point. And obviously, it has the attention of the city council, because at least four councilpersons are here tonight, even at this hour. Incredible kudos to the city, to the staff, and I confess, even to the city attorney. Even the city attorney. I yield back, Madam Chair.
He knew that was coming. Yeah, I'll, go ahead.
I will, I will be more succinct. And refocusing back to the purpose of approving this rezoning, I think what we're approving here is an opportunity for the city and the city's residents to advance ourselves. That is the focus of our work here tonight, is the rezoning. And I think we are setting ourselves up for success and pushing the city forward.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, let me wait. One, unless you're going to make another comment.
No, no comment.
No, I just, I, I think for me, it's always green space and protecting the nature, because that is an important thing to me. But I feel like my questions got answered. I'm really, really impressed with the green space, with the thought that's gone into the filtration, the thought that's gone into the floodplain areas. I'm really happy, because I too like to go ride on the bike path and take my grandkids to the river. And I am, the Pop Warner Field is very sentimental to me. And so, I am glad that that's going to get some attention. And I also have confidence that they will think about that. We'll be watching.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before I make a motion, we have to applaud the residents of Independence. I mean, absolutely incredible, the number of people are in this chamber post-midnight, building a vision for this city. It's incredible.
It is. We applaud you. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
In the matter of case number twenty-two dash one zero zero dash zero three, rezoning of Little Blue and Seventy-Eight Highway and surrounding areas, from single-family residential planned unit development to C2, general commercial, to industrial, one industrial, I move for approval.
Is there a second? I second. Thank you. Commissioner Wiley? Okay, we are ready for a vote.
This is for the Iowa zoning part. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes.
McLean.
Case number twenty-two dash one hundred dash zero three, rezoning Little Blue Parkway slash M-78 Highway, is approved.
Next case.
Next case.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
In the matter of case number twenty-two dash one two five dash zero two, rezoning from R6 and C1 to BP, PUD, and approve. Remove for approval as presented.
With conditions?
With the stipulations as recommended by the planning commission staff, without mods.
Is there a second?
I second. Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
And Chair McLean.
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash one two five dash zero two, rezoning at twenty-two zero two-two-six, Artemis Road, and approximately two twenty-four eleven, south Little Blue Parkway, has been approved with recommendations. Next case, twenty-five one twenty-five zero three. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
In the matter of case twenty-two dash one twenty-five dash zero three, rezoning from C2 planned unit development to business park planned unit development, and approval of preliminary development plan for properties at Little Blue Parkway, Truman Road, and M-78 Highway intersections, I move for approval with the recommendations as made by staff in the report.
Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Case twenty-two dash one two five dash zero three, rezoning East Truman Road slash M-78 Highway, Little Blue Parkway, with city recommendations, has passed. Thank you, everybody. Okay, other business. We're not done.
Madam Chair.
Whose idea was this?
Madam-
Capital improvements, right?
Madam Chair, I would ask the commission if there would be a motion to accept the CIP as presented. I'd be able to answer any questions you may have.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And, did you catch that? Paul Michelle, second.
I have comments.
Oops, okay.
I have a couple of them I'd like to have taken off. Capital improvements. Let me find them. Nolan Road and Lynn's Court intersection, one-one-two-three-oh-two, I'd like to have that removed. Do I have to make a motion for that, or what?
Yep.
So, I'd like, so I'd like, so what do we need to do here? Because I'd like to have that removed. Make a motion? Okay, Madam Chair, then I make a motion. I mean, I'm already in the middle of something, so I didn't know what we needed to-
Right. So, there was a motion and a second to approve-
I know.
-as submitted. You're essentially amending the motion-
Amending the motion, yeah.
-to modify that in order to take an item off.
Correct.
And so, so then, the question to the, to the rest of the commission would be, is whether they want to take that item off.
I mean, we're looking at an intersection that is, they want to straighten out, that is really part of a, it's not even part of the city, which why I don't understand why we are doing this. I mean, because that Lynn Court, basically, I don't know if anybody knows what this is. Basically, we're down at Nolan Road down there, where they built the new Andes. And basically, they want to straighten the road out, which has been that way for thirty years, since Kmart was there, and development company. It's a privately-owned company, owns that property. And we're wanting us to pay, well, almost eight hundred thousand dollars for something on there to straighten it out, and that's not the total cost, which I can't understand why we're doing something like that. And nobody's, I mean, I don't know where this came from, but I'd like to get it taken off.
I can kind of answer briefly a little bit about the history of that project. When Andes came in to the city, municipal services discussed with them the abilities to realign that intersection. If you look across Nolan Road, obviously, it's offset. One of the problems that MoDOT has had with that particular location is when vehicles come off of I-70, they can't time the signals in such a way without creating a little bit more of a backup onto the bridge over I-70. And so, when Andes came in, there was a negotiation for some right-of-way, to be able to eventually line that up with the intersection across the road, to help better facilitate that traffic movement. And so, that is the purpose of that project.
Yeah, but like I say, that is on the owners, the owners should be doing that, not us. I can see maybe the street lights be straightened out, but why would we have to pay for the pavement over there on that side? Because you're not going to do the other side, because it's already there. That's why, that's what bothers me, is why we were going to spend millions of dollars down there to do something that's on somebody else's property. If they wanted it done, they should have did it on their dime, not our dime.
Rick, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
So, you said that they deeded part of their property to the city, they granted to the city as right-of-way.
Correct.
So, we were enriched by that additional property. And ultimately, do you feel that this project is improving the public safety of the citizens of Independence?
That was the original intent for asking Andes when they came in to do so, yes.
Thank you.
But Andes doesn't own it, don't they? Do they own it, or they rent it?
So, part of Lynn Court is actually part of that development, that's there with the old Kmart. And so, one of the things that Municipal Services has been trying to do is negotiate that portion of Lynn Court to be able to make those improvements.
So, you're saying that we own it now?
No, not yet.
So, we do not- So we do not own it. So why are we spending money on that?
Again, they have that in their capital plan for next year. One of the things about the capital improvement program is that it is fluid. There is an anticipation to be able to do that project next year. That may or may not happen. It could change. That is one of the things about the capital improvements program. When they start looking at their budgeting, they want to make sure that whatever, any of the projects that are in this document are essentially proposed for those particular years, at any given time, they may have to change. But, so, they may not be able to do it next year, but it is in there as being proposed for next year.
Well, that's, I'd still like to have it taken off. I mean, that's my opinion because...
So you moved something?
Yeah, I moved that way.
Well...
Is there a second to be made?
Is there a second?
Right. I apologize, I'm not as sharp as I would have been maybe six or eight hours ago. When we have a motion, we need to have a second before we have the discussion. Once you've had, so, because if it dies for lack of a second, then it's not something that will be brought forward to the, to the body.
Okay.
If it's something that is seconded, then it can be brought forward to the body for discussion and then you can vote on it at that point. So I, I made a procedural mistake there, sorry.
Is, is it...
So at this point, we do need a second before we really would continue at any point on, on, on Commission Member Nesbit's motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay, before we go further, who made the original motion?
I made the motion.
Oh, the original, original? Or the amendment?
No.
He made the original, I seconded it.
Okay, okay.
Then I'm saying amendment to it. Sorry.
Question, staff. Is it your recommendation that we approve it?
Yes.
And I think that recommendation is...
Yes, it is, actually.
And you've revealed it and you found it worthy of, of the investment?
When talking with Municipal Services, that is yes.
What reservations do you have that we would pull it back?
I have none.
Then my, my motion stands. The second stands.
I mean, it's a...
But he, he's made a motion.
I made a motion to table that.
To amend...
So we had a motion and a second to approve as submitted?
As submitted.
Before that was voted on, we have a second motion to remove one of the items, which essentially would be an amendment to the motion that you, you approve it as submitted. Okay, so at this point, there's a, there's a motion on the floor to make an amendment, essentially to remove one of the items.
Yeah.
And the question is whether is there another commissioner that wants to second that amendment to take that out?
No.
I guess not.
Madam Chair, hearing none, then that would die for lack of a second. So that remove, that takes us back to, we have in front of the, the commission, we have a motion and a second to approve the CIP plan as submitted.
Okay.
Now...
Now, Commissioner, pardon me for jumping in here.
No, I'm so glad.
Commissioner Nesbit, if you have a list of other items that you would like to have discussed, you have one more?
Yes.
Okay, then same situation, make your motion, we'll see if there's a second.
Okay. I make a motion that we look at the square streetscape phase one and have it removed from the items.
Madam Chair, just call for a second on that.
Is there a second?
Do we, do we... Do we get to hear why he wants to do that?
That's, that's for the discussion. So if somebody wants to hear the reason why, you second it, you have your discussion and then you vote on whether or not to do the removal.
Given that it's 12:18, I would love to hear your reason in about one minute or less.
So I need, I need a second.
Is that a second?
You have to second it. You got a second.
I got a second.
Oh, you got to second it and just hear the reason?
No.
To hear the reason.
Oh. Then I retract, sir.
All I can do is second it and all we got to do is vote on it.
This, all the second, all the second does is bring it up for discussion. You then, you then would vote on whether you want to remove it or not, if, if, if it's before the body.
Yeah, so if you want to talk about it, you can second it.
I'll just say that I've been waiting for the streetscape improvements to happen for a long, long time. We'll leave it at that.
Just a second. Hearing none, we're going to go back to the original motion and the original second. We may, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Capital improvements program for fiscal years 2022 to 2028 has been approved. Next meeting is April 22nd. Is there anything else for the greater good? Anybody wants to tell anybody who's left in the room?
Where is the card?
We already did that.
We did it.
Yeah.
Up top, it's consent. That was a long time ago.
April 22nd, the month of...
All right. If there's...
April 22nd is Tuesday.
And we're having it here, right?
Yes, we are back in.
When is the next one?